This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, I want to first welcome everyone to this first city council meeting of 2022. And also, I want to wish everybody a happy new year. So today is Wednesday, January 12th, 2022, and I would like to call tonight's city council meeting to order. If we could all please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance. I stood a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic or with its hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So the first thing, first item on the agenda this evening is the swearing in of the new council members. The city clerk and director of administrative services, Maria Smeranski, will be providing the oath of office to the council members, and we will do them individually. And so the first one that we'll be doing this evening will be for council member Fox.
Good evening, and we also have had some people ask why we are doing a second swearing in, so I thought I would address that because council member Fox and Casberg are, the first time they got sworn in was because they were finishing a term, and then this swearing in is for their new term. Council member Fox, if you could raise your right hand and repeat after me?
I, Melissa Fox, do solemnly swear.
I, Melissa Fox, do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the United States and the state of Washington.
That I'm a citizen of the United States and the state of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And will, to the best of my judgment, skill and ability.
And will, to the best, to my judgment, skill and ability.
Truly faithfully.
True, sorry, I thought you were gonna say more. Can you repeat yourself? Can you repeat?
Truly faithfully.
Truly faithfully.
Diligently and impartially.
Diligently and impartially.
Perform the duties of the office.
Perform the duties of the office.
Of council position number one, City of La Center.
As council position number one, City of La Center.
In and for Clark County.
In and for Clark County.
And the state of Washington.
And the state of Washington.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
I'm sorry.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
Thank you very much, and congratulations, council member Fox.
Thank you.
Next up, we will have council member Casper. And if he on, he, I know he's doing a out on work right now, I did get a message from him, but it sounds like he is gonna be able to come on.
Yeah, I snuck away for just a minute.
Thank you so much for doing that, much appreciated. If you could raise your right hand and repeat after me?
I, Casey Casper, do solemnly swear.
I, Casey Casper, do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the United States and the state of Washington.
That I am a citizen of the United States and the state of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And will, to the best of my judgment, skill and ability.
And will, to the best of my judgment, skill and ability.
Truly faithfully.
Truly faithfully.
Diligently and impartially.
Diligently and impartially.
Perform the duties of the office.
Perform the duties of the office.
Of council position number two, City of La Center.
Of council position number two, City of La Center.
In and for Clark County.
In and for Clark County.
And the state of Washington.
And the state of Washington.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
Thank you very much, and congratulations, council member Casper.
Thank you very much.
And finally, Mr. Sean Boyle, for the first time. I see you there.
Can you hear me?
Raise your right hand and repeat after me?
I, Sean Boyle, do solemnly swear.
I, Sean Boyle, do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the United States and the state of Washington.
That I am a citizen of the United States and the state of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and the laws of the state of Washington.
And the Constitution and the laws of the state of Washington.
And will, to the best of my judgment, skill and ability.
And will, to the best of my judgment, skill and ability.
Truly faithfully.
Truly faithfully.
Diligently and impartially.
Diligently and impartially.
Perform the duties of the office.
Perform the duties of the office.
Of council position number three, City of La Center.
Of council position number three, City of La Center.
In and for Clark County.
In and for Clark County.
And the state of Washington.
And the state of Washington.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
Thank you, and congratulations, council member Boyle.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maria, and congratulations, council members. Next on the agenda, we have the roll call. Clerk, if I could please have the roll call.
Council member Fox.
Present.
Council member Casper.
Here.
Council member Boyle.
Present.
Council member Strobin.
Here. Did you not hear me? Sorry. Here.
Oh, council member Servany.
Present.
Mayor Thornton.
Present, thank you. And next to the consent agenda, if there are no requests for any items to be removed, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
To move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Thank you, council. Next on the agenda, I do have a proclamation that I'll be really reading this evening. The proclamation is for La Center School Choice Week, January 23rd through the 29th of 2022. Whereas all children in City of La Center should have access to the highest quality education possible, and whereas City of La Center recognizes the important role that effective education plays in preparing all students in the City of La Center to be successful adults, and where education is critically important to the economic vitality of the City of La Center, and where City of La Center is home to a multitude of high-quality public and non-public schools, which parents can choose for their children, in addition to families who educate their children in their home, and whereas educational variety not only helps to diversify our economy, but also enhances the vibrancy of our community, and whereas City of La Center has made high-quality teaching professionals in all types of school settings, we're committed to educating our children, and whereas School Choice Week is celebrated across the country, millions of parents, educators, schools, and organizations to awareness of the need for effective educational programs, now therefore I, Greg Thornton, Mayor of La Center, do hereby proclaim January 23rd through the 29th of 2022 as School Choice Week, and encourage all citizens to enjoy in this observance. Council, if I could get a motion to endorse the proclamation? No motion to endorse the proclamation, council?
I'm sorry, I had it on mute.
Yeah.
Forgive me, I'm moved for the approval of proclamation, La Center School Choice Week.
I can patent. Are we having mic problems tonight?
Clerk, are we having any issues with the mic, or I think it's just people are muted?
We're not, but I did see that council member Strobin was muted. I don't know if you're calling in or you're on a computer, so I'm not sure how that happened, but we can keep you unmuted if you want.
Okay, yeah, apparently I'm having some issues, sorry.
So it's been moved and seconded to endorse the proclamation for La Center School Choice Week. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Thank you, council. So next I have a, we do have plaques this evening for the city of La Center employees that will be leaving for other positions here in Clark County. The first plaque we have will be for our city permit specialist, Sarah Dollar. Clerk, could you please pull up that plaque? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and read what's on the plaque here. This is presented to Sarah Dollar, permit technician, in recognition and appreciation of your service and dedication to the citizens of La Center, and we want to thank you for your three years of service to the city. Sarah has accepted an offer with the City of Vancouver, Vancouver, to be their assistant to city council. Her new job entails staffing the council meetings, workshops, and retreats. It will be supporting all council members, which include acting as a liaison between the council and the public, and creating the agendas and taking minutes. This is an exciting new opportunity for Sarah, and I'm very happy for her that she's able to pursue something that she really is passionate about, and I just wanna, again, congratulate her, and I want to wish her the very best, and again, to thank her for the three years of service here in La Center. Sarah has done an outstanding job for us here. She started with the city little, just about three years ago. She then became the permit technician. Sarah took that position. The city was issuing somewhere in the neighborhood of about 15 to 17 building permits a year. That has grown tremendously in the past three, four years, and we're now issuing as many as 141 building permits a year, and Sarah has really done a great job to work through the many issues that we've been experiencing with all this explosive growth, and again, I want to thank you very much for her service. And then the next plaque I would like to present would be to our Public Works Director, Mr. Matt Jenkins. Again, the plaque says, presented to Matt Jenkins, Public Works Director, in recognition and appreciation of your service and dedication to the citizens of La Center. Matt has been with the service, has served the city for a total of eight years on two different occasions. And Matt has accepted the position with the Clark Regional Wastewater District. His last day will be January 17th, which is this Friday. Matt has worked for the city on two different occasions. His first time with the city was for five years, when he played a key role in integrating the city's existing wastewater treatment plant. Matt then worked briefly for the City of Ridgefield, and then returned to La Center in 2017 as our wastewater treatment plant manager. In 2018, Matt was promoted to Public Works Director, and since 2018, Matt has seen all operations of the wastewater treatment plant, Public Works, as well as had a key role in our planning and permitting departments. Again, Matt has been instrumental in working with the city through the explosive growth that we have experienced these past few years, and has done an exceptional job, and although I'm very excited and happy for Matt with his new opportunity with Clark Regional Wastewater, Matt will be sorely missed here in La Center. So again, I want to thank Matt for his many, many contributions, his great service, and he's a gentleman of great integrity, and he's a, he's not afraid of hard work, so again, congratulations, Matt. Next on the agenda this evening, council or citizen public comments. Clerk, do we have any public comments for this evening?
We do have public comments, mayor.
Please read them.
Okay, the first public comment is from Dennis Hill at 1316 West Alder Place. Greetings, Mayor, City Council, and La Center citizens. First, I want to thank Randy Williams for his many years of service to La Center as a city councilman and also as a planning commissioner. I wish him the very best and want him to know he will be missed on city council. Second, I want to encourage our mayor and administrative police chief, Bob Richardson, to continue working with the Clark County Sheriff on putting an agreement together to provide La Center with police protection. I also ask our current city councillors to encourage and support the mayor and chief in their efforts. The agreement we almost put into place last year would have saved the city over half a million dollars a year or more, and given us better, consistent, and reliable 24/7 coverage. We all want a safe city to live in. Thank you, and Happy New Year to all. The second public comment is from Nelda Perryman, 824 East Pioneer Loop. Since we now have money in the budget to hire officers to restaff our depleted La Center Police Department, have you posted these vacancies? Have you had any qualified applicants? If this process has not begun, why not, and will when it begin? Welcome, Councilman Sean Boyle. So glad you are part of our new council. Public comment number three is from Candace Irish, 1653 East Heritage Loop. First of all, Happy New Year to all of you, and welcome aboard to the new councillors. Thank you in advance for your interest in serving our beautiful city. Once again, I wish to have my concern addressed regarding the status of our city having open public city council meetings. I asked this question on a citizen's public comment I wrote on October 27th, 2021, and never heard any reply other than from Maria, which was not an answer, nor was it directed to her. I also would like to see the citizens be unmuted during the citizen's public comments period, so those attending the meeting online could speak for their allotted three minutes. For those that send in their comments, they could be read either before or after those wishing to speak had their time. I know this can be done as you have unmuted the citizens during public hearings. Thank you for your attention to this concern. I look forward to hearing from you. Public comment number four comes from Joanne Tucker, 1002 East 24th Circle. In October, we were told the city would occupy the new city hall by late November. It doesn't appear as though that has happened. If not, what is causing the delay, and what, when is the expected date of occupation for employees other than community development? Public comment number five comes from Suzie Terrell with the La Center Historical Museum, 410 West 5th Street. La Center mayor and city council, the La Center museum extends a special invitation to the mayor and council members to tour the museum at our open house on Saturday, January 15th, from 1:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. We've recently done some exciting things to the museum, and know you will enjoy stepping back in time and seeing a bit of history on the town you represent. The public is also invited to join us for a meet and greet. Coffee and cookies will be served to welcome you all. Looking forward to seeing you. That is the end of the public comments.
Thank you, clerk. So yeah, I I would like to address a couple of these public comments yet this evening. Chief, could you please respond to the public comment that we had from Nelda Perryman regarding the La Center Police Department and hiring?
Yes, yes, ma'am, I can. As you know, City of La Center uses public safety testing for our police recruitment for entry-level applicants. We've always had openings posted on public safety testing where applicants can check a box. What public safety testing does is they're kind of a one-stop shop for doing written exams and then your physical agility test, and they do that for almost all the police and fire and corrections agencies in the state of Washington, and when an applicant fills, takes the written test, they pay and they check the boxes of the police departments that they're interested and applying for, one of which is the La Center Police Department. I did look at our database there through public safety testing. We've had about 40 applicants over the last 12 months that have checked the La Center box. That does not mean that they're still available. They could have dropped out of a process at another agency, or got hired by another agency, or got, failed a background in another agency. This is just a list that we can pull from, and then we send invitations to those people, asking if they're willing to participate in an interview, an oral interview locally at the police department. Now, with that being said, if we hired somebody today, the next police academy is until May 3rd, and that runs till September 9th, and that's only because the Criminal Justice Training Center has added additional academy classes because of such the backlog that we discussed last year. Last year, the backlog was up to about six to nine months, depending on, on when you look at the calendar, and now it's, as I said, May, so the backlog isn't that bad. So we've always had the ability for people to apply for positions at the La Center Police Department. Again, I wanted to tell you that one of the things that prohibits us, or is an impediment to us hiring police officers right now, is what is the status of the La Center Police Department? It would be unethical for us to hire police officers right now and have them leave employment either as a lateral police officer from another agency, or as an entry-level police officer where they're leaving another place of employment, and get them into the academy, only to find out that the council makes a decision after the fact that they want to contract to the sheriff's department, and in doing so, those people that are in the academy have the, would more than likely, unless they're picked up by another agency, would lose their employment with us and become unemployed. So that would be, one, an ethical dilemma for us, and number two is it would potentially be a liability, expose us to some liability, because we've offered people jobs, knowing that there was a potential that there was no employment later on. So we have to have the city council make a determination of what the future of the police department is. We are currently setting up workshops, because the sheriff's department is still interested in providing contract services, so we want to give everybody an opportunity, especially the new council, to weigh in and listen to both the condition of the police department, what the current environment is for recruitment, what the potential litigation or legislation coming out of Olympia is, because there are still more police reform laws that are gonna impact not only the police department in staffing-wise, but also financially, and once we get all that done, they make a decision that we can start ramping up recruitment. So that's where we are currently.
Okay, Chief, thank you very much. I hope that adds some clarity to the question that was presented in the public comments. I'm gonna just address the one from Joanne Tucker real quick, the issue with the new city hall, as we've talked about in previous city council meetings. La Center, like every in the country right now, there's been a real, some real challenges with supply chain issues. There have been, as we were getting close to moving into the new city hall, there were some delays in receiving things like carpet, some of the materials that we needed to finish up the remodel. It added some time to moving into the new city hall. Currently, that's all been completed. I believe it's next week that we'll be getting our occupancy to actually move into the new city hall, so we're right at the point now where the city will be able to start transitioning into that new building, so it's gonna happen. One of the issues that we have right now with moving into the new city hall is getting everybody under one roof, given the, some of the concerns that we have with what's happening with this most recent Omnicom variant of COVID-19. So the city is moving forward as fast as we can to get into that building. The construction has actually been completed. We'll get our occupancy next week, and, and then we'll go on to next steps after that. So yeah, we did experience some delays. It was unfortunate, but I don't think it's different than what a lot of people are experiencing right now that are trying to do construction projects. And then the comment from Candy Irish, I will be addressing that in my mayor's comments here next, so hopefully that's gonna help the folks that asked those questions this evening, and and then we'll again, I'll address some of the others here in my mayor's comments, which I'll be doing right now. So council, I do have a few items I need to share with you this evening. First ones are pretty much just announcements and reminders. First of all, the city offices will be closed on Monday, January 17th, in observance of Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Also, council, if any of you would like to attend the city action days, AWC, City Action Days on January 27th, this is a virtual meeting. Please let Maria know so that she can get you registered. I still have council members volunteer to serve on the CTRAN board, the RTC council, and the Ridgefield Port District. The City of La Center shares a seat with CTRAN with both the City of Ridgefield and the city of, or the town of Yakult. This year, the City of La Center is the alternate. City of Ridgefield is the primary on that seat, so this year, the position would actually be an alternate, which means that person would serve or actually attend the meetings if the City of Ridgefield representative was unable to do it. So there is a responsibility there, although it's not the primary, and we do share a seat on the RTC council with the City of Ridgefield, the town of Yakult, and the City of Battleground. So there again, this year, the city is the alternate, and, but we do need to have somebody fulfill that position. So are there any council members that would like to volunteer for either one of those seats this evening?
Mayor, I'm happy to take the Ridgefield Port.
Okay. All right, well, I was gonna talk about that next. Council member Fox, but yeah, that's another position that we need to fill. Again, that's not something that we share with other cities.
Oh, I thought you were saying that was a committee position. I thought that's what you were asking.
Yeah, no, so city, but if you want to serve on that, we will surely get you the information, and that would be And uh, that would be great if you could represent the City of La Center at the Ridgefield Port District um, uh, monthly meeting. That's great. Thank you.
Mayor, what was the other one? Was that the R T C? Is that, is that what you said?
Yeah, the Regional Transportation Council and then the, also the C Tran Board.
All right, yeah, I'll, I'll sit on the R T C one. I'll volunteer for that.
Okay, thank you, council member Strobin. And we'll get you the information on that as well.
Okay.
So, that's just C Tran Board. I believe that meetings for the C Tran Board are at five thirty in the evening. Help anybody with their schedule.
If nobody else is volunteering, then mayor, I'll take it as well. Just, uh, I'll need the information, be on the alternate.
That's getting to be quite a commitment there, council member Strobin.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, um.
Um, I, I may be interested in it. I'd just like a little more information on it.
Okay, is this uh, council member Casper? Was that you?
Uh, council member Boyle.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Okay, uh, so good. We will get you the information on that. Thank you, council member Boyle, for uh, volunteering to be on the C Tran Board. I appreciate it. We'll get you the information and the schedules. And then we'll also let the, the boards know that you will be our representatives. Very good. So, also, I just want to remind the council, I think, notice on this via email, but the uh, the retreat that was originally scheduled for January twenty second has been canceled uh, due to uh, having issue with quorum. So, uh, we will be proposing some uh, new dates and schedule for upcoming retreats uh, after uh, Mr. Swanson's Community Development Report this evening. And we'll uh, try to get some times and dates scheduled for some critically important meetings that we're gonna have to have here going forward. Also, just to remind the council that uh, on Wednesday, January nineteenth, starting at six thirty P M, the city attorney will be conducting a work session. And the purpose of that work session will be for uh, O P M A, Open Public Meeting Act Training and Public Record, Records Act uh, training as well. And these are required trainings that all new council members have to have. And I would encourage all the new council members, if you haven't already acknowledged that invite, if you please let the city know that, that you will be attending. And again, that's gonna be Wednesday, January nineteenth at six thirty. So, I know um, many people are inquiring about, you know, why can't the city start having in-person meetings? And I know that we're all fatigued with COVID nineteen and the many issues that we've been dealing with now going on our third year. But just recently, Dr. Melnick, uh, County Health, County Health Department has uh, recommended that all cities continue to meet virtually. Um, it's hopefully all of you realize that we're experiencing some pretty ex, uh, pretty high numbers right now with the Omnicom variant of COVID nineteen. Uh, it's creating some real concerns and it seems that uh, we haven't gotten through that um, episode yet with uh, uh, Omnicom. So, we continue to have issues with, with COVID and and, you know, we're very minimally staffed here in La Center. And you know, the one thing that the city has to look out for is our staff members and try to keep them as isolated as we can. Uh, we surely can't afford to have um, our staff members um, with COVID, um, even though we have had some staff members that unfortunately have been sick. Fortunately, hasn't been, no one has been really seriously ill with it, but we are experiencing some of those issues here. So, the City of La Center right now, we continue to follow both the guidance from um, Dr. Mel, Public Health Services as well. Of course, we're following all the mandates that are uh, given to all uh, jurisdictions as per the Governor Inslee's orders. And I understand that Governor Inslee will be having another uh, press conference tomorrow at um, I believe it's two thirty in the afternoon and he will be updating. His purpose of that press conference is to address the COVID status in a state. So, we'll, we'll have to see what uh, what's gonna come out tomorrow from Olympia as well. So, I'm just asking for everybody's uh, continued understanding that uh, we are doing everything we can to, we all wanna have uh, open public meetings. I personally would much rather meet in public and face to face rather than doing these virtual meetings. But right now, we're pretty much restricted by issues we're having with COVID. And of course, we have to follow the governor's mandates as well. It also helps the public comment that, answering the public comment that we got earlier this evening.
Um, mayor, this is council member Boyle. I was just wondering, um, is there any way that we could uh, determine if there's a, some sort of benchmark that we need to meet to try and have in-person meetings?
Yeah, one of the benchmarks will be um, when the governor uh, re does not have the current mandates that are in place uh, as far as mask mandates, uh, six foot distancing or separation. So, there's a lot of mandates that we have to follow, um, not to mention the guidance from Dr. Melnick. So, you know, really what the City of La Center is doing is following what a lot of the other jurisdictions are doing. Uh, you may know that the City of Washougal, the City of Camas, the Clark County Council, they're still all meeting uh, virtually. Uh, we're only virtually. I believe that the City of Ridgefield does have in-person meetings. They have had them now for some time and they're gonna continue to have them. And I also understand the City of Battleground is having in-person meetings. But their chambers is much larger than the chambers that we have. And they also have an overflow room available to them if, for whatever reason, their council chambers. But to the extent where they had too many people to meet the mandates that the governors laid out, they have overflow rooms with the technology and the re, you know, to keep a live meeting active in yet another room as well as conducting the meetings virtually. So, um, yeah, there's a lot of issues with that, council member Boyle. And for our community, for our city, um, because of some of the restrictions that we have, you know, the, probably the safest play for us right now is to continue to have our meetings virtually. And hopefully, we can, you know, have some clarification and some fewer restrictions to have to deal with from the state and the county in the near future. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you. I, I just think, you know, everybody's ready to get back to being in person and uh, getting life back to normal a little bit. So, thank you for that.
Yeah, I couldn't agree with you more. I'm, I'm one of those that wanna get back to be in person. Any other questions or comments on that one, council? Okay. And then just one other item, uh, we did get a uh, public comment for the invite to the La Center Museum Coffee Social on this Saturday, January fifteenth. Uh, I know that council member Strobin has responded to that invite. Are there any other council members that are planning to attend that social on Saturday?
Yes. Yes, I've already responded and replied, so. Sorry, but yes, I plan to be there on Saturday.
Okay.
Yeah, me as well.
Okay, thank you. Council member Boyle, are you planning on attending?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, okay, I appreciate everybody letting me know on that. You, uh, we won't be having our O P M A training until um, after that social on Saturday. So, I'm gonna ask uh, the city attorney just to mention a few things to the council as well, uh, given that we're all gonna be attending that uh, meeting on Saturday. Or, yeah, or that social on Saturday. And then finally, I just wanna mention to the council that uh, hopefully, everybody knows that the La Center School Levy will be on the upcoming February eighth ballot. So, uh, just wanna encourage everybody to get out and vote on the school maintenance levy, levy for the years two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-five. Also, council, there'll be an informational meeting tomorrow um, at six P M at the La Center Community Center. And it's gonna be regarding the uh, school maintenance levy. And we also did get a special invitation from Alinda Masna for all council members to attend that meeting. So, if anybody's able to make it and so desire, it'd be great if you could attend it.
Mayor, that meeting's in person?
Yeah, at the community center.
Okay, thank you.
Repeat the date again on that. Did you say next Tuesday?
Yeah, I believe it's tomorrow, um, the thirteenth at six P M. Okay, that's all that I have this evening, council, for my public, uh, for my comments. If uh, next thing on the agenda would be the uh, city attorney's report, city attorney?
Thank you, mayor. Uh, good evening, uh, mayor, members, and members of the public. Um, let me start by wishing everybody a Happy New Year, happy twenty twenty-two. And a wish of congratulations to the new council members of Fox, Boyle and Casper. Congratulations on your election to the city council. Uh, I think it's great that you're willing to give the public your time and efforts to serve on the city council. So, I would also uh, like to express my um, appreciation and working with Sarah Dollar and Matt Jenkins over the past couple of years that I've been the city attorney. They're gonna be missed. Uh, both Matt and Sarah were hard workers, uh, very collaborative, very positive, fun people to work with. I enjoyed working with them both a lot, uh, and they're gonna be missed. On the subject of the uh, social event that's coming up, and generally in, in situations where there's gonna be a quorum of council members together. This happens at all kinds of social events, conferences, traveling together, uh, and it, it brings up an issue of compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. And so, what you have to be mindful of is inadvertently engaging in a public meeting without realizing that you're doing that. So, obviously, we have meetings in our regular uh, council meetings that are twice a month or sometimes we call special meetings, retreats where we meet. But we give public uh, notice of those meetings and they know how and when to attend and, and observe your meetings occurring. But when it comes to things like social event, uh, the public's not notified of those as being a public meeting and they don't have the opportunity to observe uh, your interactions, even though uh, there's a quorum of the city council meeting. Um, and, and that's okay. It's, it's not a violation of the Open Public Meetings Act for a majority of the council members to be present in the same place uh, so long as no action is being taken. And the, the difficult thing with that is, is that the up, the uh, Open Public Meeting Act defines the word "action" very broadly. It includes obvious things like deliberations and voting and that kind of thing that you would think is obviously an action of the city council. But there's two verbs included in the definition of action that are uh, catch all kinds of different situations. And those verbs are discussions of city business or considerations of city business. So, if in an event, uh, there's a majority of you present and you engage in discussions or considerations of city business, uh, you are engaging in a meeting. Uh, and without it being officially noticed and public being provided an opportunity to participate and observe, uh, you're engaging in a violation of the Open Public Meetings Act. And the consequences of that can be financial. It's a five hundred dollar fine for your first violation, a thousand dollar fine for every subsequent violation. There's a potential for forfeiture of office or recall for violations. Um, and there's also loss of public trust in how you're engaging in uh, your function as a city council. So, you have to be um, very mindful when you are attending an event and there is a majority of the council present that you just don't engage in discussions or considerations of city business. And that's a pretty unnatural thing, I think, to ask of you because people there know you're city council members and it's gonna be natural for them to wanna talk to you about city business. And if that occurred strictly on a one-on-one basis where you're off in one corner of the room and you're talking with one person and no other city council member is near or around you or they're not engaging in the conversation, that's not a problem. But when you get an interaction of city council members or discussions sort of sequencing from one city council member to the other city council member to the other city council member with constituents on the same topic, that's where you run afoul of the Open Public Meetings Act. And some cities, just to avoid that, they have a policy that's self-imposed where they say, "We won't have a quorum of the city council present at social events or functions," and just avoid the problem altogether. You don't have such a policy adopted. Um, and you are free to attend even as a, with a quorum, uh, attend a social event. But uh, the, what you have to do is just avoid discussion and consideration of city business while you're there. And, and just explain to people that um, you know, you can only engage in the transaction of city business in an open public meeting and this isn't it. So, we're here to enjoy the function, whatever it may be, and focus on the business of that function. But not discussion of city matters. And the other thing that I would say is, um, if it's a closed call and a court is called in to consider whether or not there was a violation of the Open Public Meetings Act, the court's always going to uh, liberally construe the act to require open public meetings. And when there's a gray area or it's a fifty-fifty call, the court's gonna come down on the side of saying, "This was an open public meeting. It should have been open to the public. It wasn't and there was a violation of the act." So, be aware of that whenever you're in situations uh, involving a quorum of the council at a setting that hasn't been officially noticed. Any questions about that?
I have a question. So, what is, is there? Where's the line if we're, obviously, we can be in public at any time and people can come up to us and share their concerns or their comments about what's on their heart regarding their own city? So, obviously, if in a social gathering like this, people can come up and start, you know, kind of talking about those things. Is that a separate thing? Because obviously, we're just listening and we're not really participating in current city activity business? Is, is that what you?
Well, so you brought up a couple of different scenarios in your question. So, let me take one that I think I heard and that is just, somebody comes up to you on the street and they wanna talk to you about city business, um, which again, that's, that's and they want to talk to you about city business, which, again, that's that's common, that's normal, that's to be expected. And that's not a public meeting when it's a one-on-one situation, because there's not a quorum of the city council present. So no concern that with that being an open public meeting.
Well, I'm asking as well as in a social event, it's going to happen as well, because there's, you know, a higher population of the public in one area. So if people come to say, oh, I want to say hello, but I also want to talk to so-and-so about this that's on my mind, is that also okay, as long as we're just listening and we don't really participate? And obviously, a big back and forth, we're just obviously, or do we ask the person to please change the subject? That's what I'm asking.
Two things. One is, so we're at a social event, and somebody's coming up to you and talking about this. The the passive receipt of information is not discussion or consideration. It's not an Open Public Meeting Act violation to just sit there and passively receive what somebody is saying to you and saying, thank you for your concerns, you know. I can't really engage in this because it's not an open meeting, but I hear you, and I'm aware of your concerns. Thank you very much. That's fine.
Okay, good, Matt. Yeah, thank you.
And then, again, in my scenario that I gave you, where if you're off in a corner of the room, not near any other city council member, and you engage in a one-on-one conversation with the person about a concern, that's not a violation of the Open Public Meetings Act. But it's where if you happen to be around other council members, and then two or three council members are starting to add comments, then you're in a situation where you could be inadvertently violating the act.
Okay, that's clear to me now. Thank you.
Bronson, just for clarification on what you just actually said, you said two or three. It is three, right, for a quorum?
It's three for a quorum.
Okay.
We get into the, you know, and this is a little bit of a teaser of our training, where we'll go into this in more depth on the nineteenth. So hopefully, this is piquing your interest. But you also have the potential for even though there may only be two present at the moment, later on, there's a third person, a third council member involved, and you can have what we call a serial meeting where the discussion is tagged on from two to another to make it now three in a quorum. So it is potential for violating the act where more than, well, a quorum, three or more, do participate in a discussion in a sequence. Any other questions? Okay, the last thing I'd like to talk to you about is the Riverside Estates subdivision. As I told you at a previous council meeting, we are in a receivership proceeding. We had a court hearing, and I want to say December seventeen, regarding a motion to sell some property to the city to remove liens that were imposed by a company that did earthmoving on the site. I I don't want to go into a whole lot of detail here. I've talked about it in the past. But the the judge ruled in our favor. He ruled that the sale of the Phase Four Park property on the north end of the development can proceed, and that that would be free and clear of liens. There's liens on streets and different tracts of property with utility easements in favor of the city. He ruled that those could be transferred to the city free and clear of any liens. We were set to have the order entered this Friday, at a hearing this Friday. The attorney for the earthmoving company has filed a motion for reconsideration of the court's decision. And the court, due to scheduling problems, has had to move the hearing to a week from this Friday. So continuing saga of Riverside Estates, and I'll report to you more following that hearing. I hope that's not too truncated or understandable. If we we can get into more detail in the executive session, if that's the council's desire. That's it, Mayor, for the attorney's report. Unless there's any questions.
Thank you, Bronson. I appreciate it. So, yeah, any other questions for the city attorney this evening, counsel?
This is Councilmember Boyle. I have one question. I was just wondering, I know we're going to get some training on this here shortly. But is there any way we could get some sort of a cheat sheet or, you know, breakdown of that, just to have kind of look over before entering into these sort of situations?
You bet. There there's a couple of things. One, there'll be a PowerPoint, which will have a lot of detail, a lot of information in it for you, and so that will be available to you. There's also resources I would point you to, two websites. One is the Washington State Attorney General's Office has quite a bit of information about the Open Public Meetings Act. And the other is the Municipal Research Service Center, MRSC.org. They have a lot of information, public records, open public meetings. They have a great book that's Knowing the Territory, which is a great resource for newly elected officials. But we'll we'll get you the PowerPoint of the Open Public Meetings Act presentation that will, I think, provide you with a lot of the information that you're interested in.
Okay, thank you very much.
Very good. Okay, thank you, Bronson.
You're welcome.
The next call, so we do have two staff reports this evening. The first staff report will be the community development report, and that will be presented by Mr. Jeff Swanson. Yep?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and council. And just have a couple of project updates for you. If we can get the map up there. And the first one is project number eight, which is Heritage Country Estates. In that subdivision, all the lots have now been permitted for construction. Next one is project number nine, that's Highland Terrace. And the contractor has completed the first lift of paving for the Phase One construction. The property owner has submitted Phase One plat for a second review. Construction items will need to be completed for that Phase One plat approval, as well as bonding for the maintenance before the plat can be approved. The first final plat review comments were sent on December seventeenth. There was a monument sign review submitted on December fifteenth, and staff emailed the park review letter on November the nineteenth. The next project update is number twelve, which is Riverside Estates. And second round comments were provided on October the twentieth. This is for the final site plan. And the final site plan review was issued on December the fourteenth. The Phase Two final plat review was submitted on December the twenty-second. Project number thirteen is Stevens Hillside. And the owners of that property, their engineering firm submitted a revised plat plan for technically complete approval. That was reviewed, and we issued a finding of incompleteness on December twenty-ninth. So there are some outstanding issues that need to be resolved and sent to the city in order for that to be processed. Number eighteen is the City Hall, and temporary occupancy of the building is pending until the elevator has phone service and punch list items are complete per a Clark County Fire and Rescue and the building official. A new internet service and the elevator phone line are being installed by T E S. Number twenty is the Fudge Property. That was a boundary line adjustment that has now been completed. Number twenty-one is Tapany and Carlson Commercial. The city scheduled a pre-application conference with Tapany, Inc. to consider a proposed commercial retail use on the Carlson Commercial property. That was held on November twenty-third, and the pre-application notes were distributed to the applicant on January the fourth. And finally, a new project, number twenty-two, which is Los Angeles Heights. And this is a one hundred and eighty-unit multifamily site plan proposal in the Timmin Landing area. A pre-application meeting was scheduled and held on January the sixth. Any questions about any of the development projects?
Yeah, Jeff, do we have any update on the minute management?
We have no update on that at this time.
The last I seen was the plans for the convenience store were submitted. Were those accepted?
Let me look at my notes here. I believe those have been accepted and reviewed. I need to find that in my notes. Again, bear with me just a second. Yeah, so plans for the convenience store building were actually submitted back in June. And so I believe those have been reviewed. And yeah, so I think they continue to move along. The last word I had on the entire project was that because of escalations in materials and labor, that they were needing to hold off for a little bit.
Understandable. And I know that we've spoke about it, and I think in some of our retreats and stuff, and I don't see it in your staff report. Is there any continued talks with the tribe on the sewer line that was brought up back then?
There are continued talks with the tribe, yes. Yeah, so those discussions are ongoing.
Okay, thank you, Jeff.
Any other questions? Okay, Mayor, would you like me to talk about the retreat planning?
Yeah, if you would, please, Jeff. Yeah, I know you put some time into it, and we need to get some commitments from the council and start putting together a schedule for upcoming work sessions. So let's take a crack at it.
Okay, so I think probably the the best way to to do this is going to be to send you a doodle poll rather than try to find a series of workable dates here in the city council meeting. But what we what we have in terms of topics we would like to cover, of course, Bronson will be presenting to you on the nineteenth to talk about Public Records Act and Open Public Meetings Act. Generally, Bronson and I like to tag-team a discussion about form of government. And so that would be a separate session we'd like to schedule. There are two sessions we would like to have, one with the Clark County Sheriff's Office to talk about the pending agreement for them to provide law enforcement services, and another with John Walters from Public Safety Testing to talk about the labor market for police. So these are two separate sessions, each, you know, about an hour and a half, two hours. And then the fifth one that we have, we'd like to line up, is a meeting with the council and with the Eighteenth Legislative District Delegation. So that would be Senator Rivers and Representatives Vic and Hoff. We've typically put together a meeting so they can talk about what they're doing in Olympia and what they're seeing on the horizon. And you can, of course, ask them questions about any upcoming legislative topics. So that's what we're thinking is that we would do these kind of like we did last year on weeknights, but we'll need to, you know, instead of having a Saturday, what we were trying to do is do the the twenty, Saturday, the twenty-second, and cover a lot of these topics in a full retreat. Instead, I think what we will do is propose some Tuesday night, Wednesday night, and Thursday night dates, say, from six to eight P M. for these council retreat topics. And if it's okay with you all, what I'll do is email you a doodle poll with some potential dates and ask you to respond with your availability.
Jeff, can you also throw a Saturday or two in there? I I find that the Saturdays, we accomplish a lot more than having to break and then restart again. If if that's a possibility. And then, when I asked you about the retreat, you said it was in person that that Saturday. So if we do choose a Saturday, or if we're going to be doing these evening ones, are these also going to be in person?
These evening ones would be virtual. And if we could, if we could pull together a Saturday, you know, just having talked to a couple of folks, it didn't sound like Saturdays were going to work until late February or March sometime. So we're trying to pull together some of these topics prior to then. And hopefully, by, you know, by the time we can do a Saturday and it works for people's schedule, hopefully, we can meet in person. The other thing I would ask, counsel, is if there are other topics that you would like to have sessions organized around. And we can do those either, you know, as work sessions prior to city council meetings from five-thirty to six-thirty. We can schedule some of these two-hour sessions on a weeknight, or we can put them on a Saturday at some point in the future. But are there other topics that you would like to add to this retreat agenda list?
Yeah, Jeff, actually, there are. But I'll wait. Go ahead, Liz, sorry.
Jeff, this is Liz. Are you incorporating the conflict of interests and perception of fairness in one of these sessions again?
Bronson, is that in the curricula that you'll cover on the nineteenth, or would that be in a different session?
Jeff, that would have to be a different session.
Okay.
Maybe we can get that in a workshop prior to one of our council meetings, Bronson?
Yeah, we could. We could do that on Ethics and Apairness and Fairness. And I think we could cover it probably in an hour before a council meeting.
Yeah, there, I mean, just so that we, I I think it's important to cover it each year to keep it fresh in everybody's minds and our roles and what we do.
Okay, we'll work on getting that scheduled. Okay, Councilmember Strobin, I think the ball passes to you.
Yeah, actually, I'll be sending out the email to you and the mayor that is kind of floating there with the council. There's been some conversations in it, so some of the stuff that we would like to discuss. So I'll, once that's finalized, we'll send it over to you guys.
Okay, what conversations are you referring to?
Just some of the stuff that the council would like to discuss, some of the other council members would like to discuss.
Okay, have those been raised in a council meeting?
Uh, no, no, they were actually discussed with the mayor. I had a discussion with the mayor a few weeks back on a phone call.
Remind me what that was about, Councilmember Strobin?
Contracts and contractors.
Okay. Have you talked with other council members about that?
Um, there has been some conversations, yes. As soon as something is finalized, we can send it over.
So, yeah, we'll want to have those discussions in a council meeting, Councilmember Strobin. So if other council members want to say anything about that at this time?
Oh, yeah, this is Councilmember Boyle. I think we just want to look into the consultants, the status of their contracts, and what versus, you know, full-time and And what versus, you know, full-time employment for Some of these different positions that we've hired by consultants at this time.
Any other council members?
I'm also in agreeance with that topic being added.
Okay, this is a discussion that you've already had?
There has been brief conversations of what people have been discussing, yes. Nothing in any type of form.
You say you're doing it individually?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyle, again, I just want to say a lot of this was discussed in our campaigns prior to us being elected.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, again, I just want to reemphasize the issue of serial meetings and conversations, Even though they may occur between two council members. If then the conversation occurs with a third council member And it's on the subject of city business. And what you're doing is working towards Coming to some type of a consensus or understanding of What you want done in terms of council business. You risk violating the Open Public Meetings Act. It doesn't have to be three council members at once. It can be sequential.
Yeah, nothing has been discussed, Bronson, about what we want done. There's been talks of discussions that we want to discuss with the city and in council meetings. So nothing has been discussed on a finalized.
It doesn't just have to be the final action. If it's about city business, Then it's subject to the Open Public Meetings Act.
And it's in emails, Bronson. There's an email that's in the city email.
Sure what you mean.
These are topics that we would like to discuss. The council has to be able to, the council has to be able to submit ideas of stuff that they'd like to speak about. And that's what we're doing here.
For us. So there are also concerns that people brought to us. It wasn't about us having a conversations. They're constituents' concerns that we are here to bring forward.
I think it's important that we all understand The policies and procedures involved in our positions before we start Mowing down a path of what we have hopes of achieving. And I, I don't know how to express that So that everybody really understands how critically important that is From a community's perspective of above-board transparency. And it doesn't matter what Our campaign was run on, or what we wish to accomplish on our individual goals. Well, you know, when we have, when we're running for office. What matters is that each of us follow the process. Understand, you know, as an elected body, what our roles and obligations are, What the legal limitations are, and how to work. And I just want to hope that each of you give The attorney that chance to give each of you that guidance So that you don't step off the curb and get hit by the truck before ever you even get started. And it's easy to get swayed. And it's easy to run a gauntlet, you know, thinking that whatever we heard when we ran for office Needs to be done quickly. But what we quickly learn in municipal government is nothing happens quickly. As much as we'd like it to, there's a process that we all have to follow. So I would just encourage you to let Bronson Guide you and educate you on where the resources are and what steps we need to do And in what fashion first. And then we can proceed with the particular topics that are really pushing the hot buttons for each of you. But That's, that's my concern right now from what I'm hearing here.
Thank you, Councilmember Strobin. And thank you, council. So yeah, clearly we have some training that we're going to need to do. Jeff, I'd like for you to get that doodle poll out as soon as possible. And I would like to start scheduling some of these meetings. I mean, City has a tremendous, tremendous amount of business that we need to take care of. And we're all going to have to get up to speed here relatively quickly. So yeah, we have a full plate. There's no question. I would like to see us get some meetings scheduled yet this month. One of my priorities is to have a meeting again with the Clark County Sheriff's Office. And then we'd like to have that done in or later than within the next two. So if we could please get everybody to respond to that poll as fast as possible so we can get some of these things scheduled. And we will continue on with the training, and then we will address all these Concerns and topics that the council wants to discuss as well. One other question. It is required that all newly elected officials take the A W C training for newly elected officials. Councilmembers, have you each taken that training, or have you scheduled to take that training? I'll start with you, Councilmember Fox.
No, I have not taken that.
Councilmember Boyle?
No, Mayor.
Okay, and Councilmember Casper?
Yes, I attended it in December.
Okay, very good. Thank you. So yeah, if, if you could please work with Maria to get your schedule for that training. That's critically important. And I know there is a, I believe anyway, there's a timeline on it. But that training also really does a great Overview and some great information as far as roles and responsibilities. Some of the things that city attorneys talked about already this evening. And some of the topics that we'll be bringing up in our trainings. But it is required that new council members do take that, that training. So please get that scheduled with the city clerk as soon as you can. Jeff, is there anything else that you need from the council this evening to start moving forward with getting these things scheduled?
No, I think, I think that's quite enough for this evening. I'll consult with the city attorney On some of the training topics and we'll get the doodle poll out and get those scheduled post haste.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Any other questions from the council for either Jeff or I, city attorney, next steps? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Jeff. So the other staff report we have this evening, council, will be from the, it'll be the public works staff report. And Mr. Matt Jenkins, our public works director, will be presenting. It's all yours, Matt.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council, citizens. So I've got the January Public Works Staff Report. I'll start with Public Works Operations, Streets and Facilities. Public Works continues to work on keeping city properties maintained and the drainage systems clear throughout the city. That's been super important this month as we've all seen these high numbers of rain precipitation that we've gotten. Not only here, but across Clark County. As always, the crew is continuously monitoring and repairing potholes throughout the city along with any other road hazards. Especially this time of year with the, with the ice and snow and Ice especially tends to erode asphalt and concrete pretty quickly. So they are diligent. They are doing rounds. If anybody, I like to remind anybody, if they see a pothole, it's been there for, you know, an extended period of time Or it's, it's very deep and troublesome, please go to our Ask P W system and submit a work order or, or call in. We will, we will address it. So we appreciate all the eyes we can get. In December, a driver damaged the guardrail on the Center Road at the Timmin intersection. Certified contractor will be hired to repair and replace that to meet Washington State D O T standards. That'll go through a claims process. The driver will have to pay for it because it's their It appears to be their problem. And at their fault. During a recent snow and ice event, staff applied over two thousand gallons of de-icer and traveled approximately six hundred and fifty thousand miles while plowing and de-icing. Part of that mileage also was inspected for other areas that needed de-icing. But still quite a bit of mileage if you think about it. Public Works will be performing annual maintenance on all the vehicles and equipment. We don't have to mow as much this year, so the way we've timed our schedule is Most of our annual, most of our equipment annuals we place in the winter time when the mowing slows down, and then we can tackle the equipment manuals As a staff and try to reduce cost of outsourcing those repairs to dealerships and Equipment manufacturers, especially on vehicles and equipment that are out of warranty. Parks and grounds, irrigation systems, they've been drained and purged with air to protect them during cold weather. Public Works crews remove hazards, a hazardous tree near Fourth and Highland intersection. They monitor both city properties and roadside trees for visible hazards. They're also looking at some throughout town That have been reported recently. Battleground work crew are assisting on a limited basis. We're still getting more crews even though Omicron is spreading. We haven't got county crews back yet, but Battleground has been pitching in when they can. We truly appreciate it. Pruning and weed controller ongoing. Winter fertilizer will be applied as weather permits. Obviously, the heavy rains aren't great for Fertilizer application because of the runoff. On the personnel side. Emery Oldman just joined the team January third of this year. He brings an excellent skill set to the team along with the Class A C D L. He's a trained diesel technician as well. He's worked in a number of Equipment maintenance situations along with landscaping and groundskeeping. So great skill set. We're happy to have him on board. Really neat, really neat guy. I hope each of you get a chance to say hi to him and meet him. And we look forward to having him on the staff. Currently, all staff are working normal shifts. All appropriate safety precautions are being followed for COVID. Masking, social distancing, et cetera. On the wastewater operations side, All plant parameters remain well within compliance to M P D S permit as usual. The N B Rs were cleaned on the second, third week of December. And the plant continues to perform well during high-flow rain events. We actually had one day of, I believe, Seven hundred and thirty thousand gallons, which are our average daily flow permit numbers, six hundred and ninety thousand. So we're actually over our average day. So that was a pretty high-flow rain event with I and I. But the plant handled it well. The staff did great, and you should be proud of them and this facility. On the maintenance side, routine preventative maintenance is ongoing. Staff's currently working on programming issues at lift station five and six. Those are our two newest lift stations, just for background to our newest council members. As, you know, within the first year of a new lift station, in the first two years, you just work out the gremlins and the programming and the logic within the controllers. So those are continuing to be worked out. They're small issues. They're, they're nothing dire, but As staff catches them, they continue to work on them. On the administrative side, the December twenty-one D M R has been submitted to the Department of Ecology. Also, the annual twenty-one F L annual characterization testing has been completed, and results have been sent to the Department of Ecology for that. Staff's currently working regular shifts, but maintaining social distancing practices. Our operations staff have completed thirty hours continuing education in order to satisfy their state Washington license requirements for their wastewater license. Our licenses have been renewed for twenty-twenty-two. The operations and maintenance manual update and review confirmation letter has also been submitted to the Department of Ecology. You'll hear that in the future, classified as the O N M, O N M manual. It's just operations and maintenance. On the project side, the SCADA upgrade project is well underway. That was a project that was funded and started in twenty-twenty-one. The system's been installed along with one workstation for testing and debugging. The remaining workstation will be installed on January thirteenth. We actually worked with them today, and we'll be working with them tomorrow. And staff will begin using the system in parallel with the old SCADA system, which is our control system at the plant. Until the debugging, debugging process is complete. So even though it was funded in twenty-twenty-one, some of these projects take a while to debug. And make sure that they're a hundred percent before we pull the old system offline, which we, which even though it's old man equated, we know and trust. So staff are currently working with Combotive membrane incorporated. On purchase, delivery, and installation of the replacement membranes for summer of this year. Staff report and council approval requests are upcoming. I would imagine that'll probably be in the next council meeting After my departure sadly, but I will submit a staff report to Tony, have him present to you with the price and cost, costing of those. It came in below budget, so I think he'll be happy with those numbers. On the building department side, Permitting and construction are still progressing, but we have noticed a continued seasonal slowing. Staff are conducting on average ten to twelve stops per day, resulting in twenty to thirty-five inspections per day. And that's both residential and commercial. Single-family residential plan review times are back down to two weeks, just with Slowing of everything. We've been able to rub that back and do a two-week turnaround. And then this, this, this section got kind of tight-put up, and I apologize for that, but It says staff has taken in ninety-three family and five commercial building applications since the start of the year. That would be amazing since we're at the twelfth. But really, it was ninety-seven and five for two thousand and twenty-one, and we're sitting at about three so far for twenty-twenty-two. So just to note there. The new middle school has achieved temporary occupancy. The building official continues to work with the school district to achieve final occupancy as soon as possible. Teresa's Little School, they've been granted their third temporary occupancy for ninety days, set to end in April. The building official continues to work with Gentile Investments to achieve final occupancy, but They, they are cooperative. They are moving forward. We're just, you know, As they work through these small issues, part of it, part of it is sourcing the timing with subs. So we're sensitive to that. We're sensitive to their business. So we want to work with them as best we can in the building department. That's why there's a third extension there. Also, Sea Turn will be moving, removing the shelter at the Park and Ride, or the Paver Parking Lot, as we call it, in the Parking lot across from Holly Park as part of their twenty-twenty-two plan. So if you see that, that's what's going on there. On the stormwater side, the street sweeper continues to run throughout town as time permits. And staff's been cleaning roadside dishes and culverts in the stormwater system along with some catch basins that collect A number of debris during these high-flow events. So that's my report. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Hey, Matt, sorry to see you leave. It's been a pleasure working with you. To get to know you and your family, it's been great. That being said, the SCADA or SCADA project, I know is a big thing that you guys are undertaking down there. And with you leaving, have you, is somebody heading that up to make sure that goes flawlessly at that point?
Yeah, absolutely. Jeff Hammond will be heading it up. He's, he's recently been promoted to chief operator down here. So he'll, he's also going to take over a lot of the reporting as well. But he's well-versed in this. Just a little background with him, he, he worked for Veolia Water North America as a supervisor for about twenty years. He also helped the commissioning of Aalen A, their treatment plant and their hotel. I mean, he's, he's a very well-rounded individual, and he's Fully prepared to take this on. Not to mention, I'm not moving, not going anywhere. I'm a phone call away, and I'm always happy to help.
You will be missed, Matt, for sure.
Thank you, council members. Okay, well, if there's no other questions, I, it's been a pleasure, and thank you all. And this is my final report. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Matt. You will be missed, but we're excited for you as well with the opportunity that lies ahead. And appreciate your diligence, hardworking, your ethics, and your positive outlook. And I think what always will remain with the community is your willingness to look For positive conclusions to everything that's been brought forward to you. Looking for compromise in a way to get things done, even if it didn't necessarily meet with The old path of the way things have been done or specific ordinance. I commend you for all that you've done so well.
Thank you very much for that, council member. It was my pleasure working with you as well.
Okay, council, any other questions or comments for Public Works Director this evening?
I just wanted to say thanks, Matt, and best of luck to you.
Yeah, and I'll tag along with that and say the same. I didn't get to meet you or work with you, but I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Mayor, this is Maria, and I just wanted to back up and say that we have skipped the council comments before the staff reports. We didn't do, go around and have the council.
I do apologize. So thank you for bringing that to my attention. We'll do that right now. I apologize, council. Yeah, so for any comments from the council this evening, starting with Councilmember Fox?
I just want to say Happy New Year and I look forward to Saturday, just being there for the community and getting to be in the museum. I know they've put a lot of work into this, so I really look forward to that. And I just, yeah, look forward to the next four years. So glad to be here.
Councilmember Casper?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Matt, I think, I think you're going to do a great job at, at where you're headed to. So we will definitely miss you here. Thank you. Unfortunately, I won't be able to attend the meeting at the, at the museum on Saturday, but I sure hope it's well-attended and I do look forward to getting down there very soon. There's, I do look forward to talking with our eighteenth district representatives. I think this is going to be a really important legislative session, even though it's going to be a short one. There's a lot of things that are going to be coming through the state legislature that, that everybody needs to be aware of. Primarily the, the police reform laws and the, and the repercussions of that, that I think all the citizens are, are concerned about. And I think that's it. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Boyle?
Yeah, I just want to say one thing. I, I just wrote a little something. I just want to say good evening to everybody and I just want to say I am humbled and grateful for the support shown by electing me to position three. I look forward to earning your trust for the betterment of our city. Is my goal to do right by the people of our community by listening to their concerns and finding solutions to protect the integrity of this city of the center. I will work tirelessly to establish the groundwork necessary to build a platform I stood on and to, stood on to get elected. Thank you again, and I look forward to serving our community.
Very good. Thank you. And Councilmember Strobin?
I too like to wish everybody a Happy New Year. Hopefully, everybody had a great Christmas as well. Congratulations to the new councilors. I look forward to working with you. Matt and Sarah, good luck in your ventures going forward. And then I think that's about it for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Strobin?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'd also like to recognize the work that Sarah has performed for the community. I have heard nothing but praise for her professionalism and her integrity and interactions with all of the individuals that came forward throughout our busy season for development, building and development. She did much, much more than just the, the title on her plaque. Whatever task came before her, she tackled and she tackled very well. So I know she will serve the city of Vancouver very well. And I wish her the very best. I too would also like to welcome each of the brand-new council members. I know how excited you must be in your new roles. And I look forward to working with each of you. And if I can offer any, you know, historical perspective or comments or guidance, I'm happy to. You know, whatever, whatever we can do to work strongly to improve the community, that, that's always our focus. You know, we all live here, so we love this community and we want to see it grow and take care of the beauty that, that we all love. So welcome aboard and thank you for serving.
Okay, thank you. Again, thank you, Maria, for bringing that to my attention. So that pretty much concludes our meeting for this evening. We've covered everything on the agenda. If there's no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Staying? Motion carries. The meeting is adjourned at eight oh seven PM. Thank you, council, and thank you everyone for joining us this evening. I hope everybody has a great rest of the evening and stay well, everyone. Take care. Thank you.
Good night.